County Administration Building. We'll hold a public hearing on the guidelines and criteria of granting tax abatements in Brazos County, and all interested persons are invited to attend said hearing and present their cause, if any, for or against proposed guidelines. So we'll open up a public hearing and, um, Counsel?
Yes, sir. Judge, Commissioners, members of the public and staff, just a few brief remarks just to get you to where we are today. But what we're here for today is a Section 312 Tax Code Public Hearing on our proposed economic guidelines. I think y'all all received those by email a while back and had a chance to hopefully look at them. But in order to use the economic tools that the state has granted us under Section 312, we have to have published written economic guidelines. So staff has prepared those. We have submitted those to Allison Bass, Mr. Allison and Mr. McGee. We've viewed them, made some comments that were incorporated into the agreement that you have before you today. But the, one of the main reasons that you have the incentive to do this is that historically we've used 381s. And if you have a 381 that has a $200, $200 million dollar capital investment and, and you let them pay the taxes and then rebate 50%, that whole $200 million is on your tax base and counts against your cap. If you use one of the tools under the 312, you can actually do a different agreement where you agree that even though they have a $200 million value for X number of years, you will only, as a taxing authority, evaluate that, value that property at 100 million. And a result of that, only that 100 million goes on your tax base. So because of the changes in the legislature, we've gone from our 381s, which are relatively easy to monitor, they don't have to clawbacks, they've been preferable to us. Because of the cap situation, we need to have other items in our arsenal that we can use to incentivize economic development. I've kind of skipped the whereses, but just to direct your attention to the parts that I think would be most applicable, most interesting. And the first one is Section A, the criteria for tax abatements. On the next page, Section B is the specific criteria, and this is one that, our numbers that are specific to Brazos County. These numbers certainly can be changed. It's at the decision of Commissioners Court. We have proposed that our criteria start at $10 million, and we have proposed that our standard would be five years and 50% as a maximum. You are, as you can see on the last line, you reserve the, the ability to do something greater than that for a project that exceeds the minimum requirements. The only other thing I think that your policy would affect is, on the next page, we'll go to an application process where companies that are coming in that want economic incentives will fill out an application. Actually, we proposed a $1,000 fee, which is pretty common around the state. That can also be adjusted at your discretion. Do you have any questions about the policy or before I step aside and let the public comment?
Just, okay, so pragmatically, what this is about is, is if we had somebody who wanted to make a further investment in existing, or somebody that wanted to come in and it was a significant size, let's say, for example, like happened over in Williamson County, all of a sudden Samsung is coming in, it's a $17 billion dollar capital investment. So this is for larger projects and gives us the ability to be able to make a commitment without compromising the way that our no new revenue rate and our voter approved rate as far as taxes go, so it's more suitable for the $10 million projects and above?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think that's an accuracy.
So, well, I'm glad because I know that we had done some things before in consideration of some significant improvements. I think the $2 billion investment that was going to potentially be made here locally, that was one where we had some concerns over the difference between 381 and what that commitment was relative to how it might impact our tax base. So I'm really glad to see that we have these, that we're meeting the criteria in order to be able to use 312 as a tool for economic development as well. And who knows, you know, if you have it out there, maybe somebody like Samsung or whatever, like the expansion that was the $2 billion expansion of potential for Fujifilm Dyson, maybe, you know, this, this is something where we can participate without putting the county's ability to fund itself from a tax perspective. And I think it's great. Thank you for doing this. And I look forward to hearing what people have to say about their thoughts on this. This would preserve us also the right to be able to individually tailor our 312, if we were to use them agreements specific to whichever entity it was and what the criteria were for their development was.
Yes, and if, when we get to the point where we have an active entity looking to come here and you're looking at this, there's, there will be an additional process for that specific project. It'll involve a public hearing just like this. People have a chance to talk about it. We'll actually designate a certain area as a reinvestment zone as part of this process. But absolutely, and like I said, there'd be opportunity for public input at that point where we're actually considering a specific project and what they're going to invest and how many people they're going to employ.
Thanks.
Okay, so let's open it up to publics. Anybody want to speak? Come on up, Jody.
I'm not signing.
Well, this is a public hearing, so you didn't, you didn't need to sign up. Two acts of talk, come on.
Jody Quimby, 4686 River Garden Court. I don't have any prepared statements, but just listening to Mr. Eric lay out what you're here today for, one of the things that always comes to mind for me when they're talking about abatement or even exemption, remember, an abatement is a short-term exemption, okay? Under conditions is what Mr. Eric pointed out. But one of the things that I would encourage you to do is to let the public know what the positive things that may have happened with this procedure before and the failures of that that has happened. Because remember, what this is, is naming winners and losers, and that's not a good thing for government to be doing based on how our economic system works with producers. I'd also ask you to seriously consider anyone that you're, you're looking to award these, these abatements to, to be a producer. And now, that's part of what Mr. Eric pointed out, but a producer, not a user of, of, of the public till. I don't know how many people are aware, but when you're talking about exemptions with respect to the state of Texas, sales tax exemptions for entities with the state of Texas is voluminous. It goes on almost forever. And we have come to the place of thinking that's okay, and it's not okay. There are, the idea behind abatements is to encourage someone to come here. But when you have an organization that's looking for a place to be, and if Brazos County's tax rate is lower than the competing areas and you have a good source of, of labor here, why wouldn't somebody come here without an abatement? I encourage you to investigate those things before you jump into an agreement with someone to give away tax dollars for a promise in the future. Because I know some of those that have happened in other places and here, I don't have a record of those things, but I understand they've been gross failures because of promises that were made that were too all encompassing to even be accomplished. So the benchmark for starting, for considering these was $10 million. I don't even know if that's appropriate or not. Maybe it needs to be multiples of that, maybe it needs to be half of that, I don't know. But I would encourage you, as I indicated, first of all, to make the public aware of what you consider successes with this process and failures of it, so we can judge whether you're making good decisions for us or not. Okay? Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. So kind of in response, I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, we've done, we'd kind of gotten away from doing turges and that sort of things, you'd done 381s. And what I liked about 381s is that they actually paid their taxes in, and then we rebated some of those taxes back. That, we were not giving, like out of the general fund, tax money back to any company to come here. It was what they brought in, it was in an increment above of what the value they brought to Brazos County, that they got a, a piece of that back after they brought it here. So it wasn't like we promised, you know, that we were going to pay them money to, to come here. The only way they got any money was if they paid those taxes, and then we set those, depending on what the company was, we set the values and, and they would come in and they'd tell us, we're going to, we're going to create X number of jobs and we're going to put this value on the tax rolls and a number of things. And if they didn't meet those, they didn't get, they still paid their taxes, but they didn't get a rebate on what they, so if there was a, not a success, it was only because we got, Brazos County got the tax money, we got the whole thing and we didn't put it, we didn't give any back because they didn't meet those goals that we said upfront, this is what you have to meet for you to get a rebate back. And if you meet all those, then we give you. So if, I mean, that's the only thing I can think of that maybe you might have misinterpreted as being a, not, okay, well, so there, I, that's the reason, public hearings and explanations and those kinds of things are really good. I mean, that, that gives us an opportunity to, to lay out really what the facts are.
And Judge, I don't remember the date. I can get Mr. Quimby the date, but as most people here will recall, we actually had a report from the EDC where they come in once a year and they tell us exactly how all our agreements are going and what the investments.
Well, not, not all, not all. We have some that are outside of
That's true, we do now.
The purveyance of the EDC, the EDC on the incentives that we have participated in, and the EDC has been the lead on that. But then we also have other 381 agreements where
We have a couple, yeah.
And I'd asked that we had an update on those projects as well.
Anybody else from the public have any comments, one, come on?
So I, my name's Kathy Vians. I live at 9940 White Creek Road. I'm in precinct four. I do have a question about, I, I understand now that abatements have been going on forever, but as Jody had mentioned, it is a shifting of the tax burden from the general public to promote specific businesses, preferred businesses, and I just wanted to point that out. I just happened to run across an article about A&amp;M having received over $500 million from Qatar, and I, it makes me wonder, gosh, are we giving tax abatements to different A&amp;M programs when they're taking money from foreign countries that are not under supervision of the state legislature? And I wonder what other kind of abatements are being given? And I looked on the, quickly looked, on the Commissioners Court webpage to see if there was any kind of reports about what businesses have been given abatements, what their current status is, what the progress and profitability of those abatements have been, and I didn't see anything, but I, maybe it's there and I just missed it. So, just want to make that comment.
Okay, so first, we don't give any abatements to Texas A&amp;M because they're tax exempt. So it, they don't, they don't pay taxes, but that's state law. And again, the abatement is, if, if, if the value is not there, then there's no taxes paid. And a lot of times what happens is there's a, there's a piece of property out there that maybe is in agriculture or, or it just is, the value that's on the tax rolls is very low. And so what happens is that when we have a company that comes in and say, oh, we want to build a manufacturing plant or whatever it is, and we're going to add this amount of value to the tax rolls, that's what, a portion of that, that is what actually gets rebated back to them. So it's not like we paid tax money from the, from the, from our general fund to them to come here. They have to provide that, and then a portion of what that increase that, that the county gets out of it, that we wouldn't, if they didn't come, maybe 20 years from now, somebody else might decide that they're going to buy that property and do something with it. So it's an incentive to get them here, but it's not like we're paying them cash money to, to come in here. They only get a portion of what they actually pay, and it's the increment above what that value was, what it started out as, you know, whatever the value was before they ever did anything. So it's, it is not a, again, it's not a, a payment from general funds to a company to come in here. It is the increment above that they're going to put value on the rolls. And not, not only just value, but they bring jobs and, and all those sorts of things that we look for and we, we hope to get.
Yeah, and when we do jobs, I mean, it's not only the value of the, the addition to the property value, it's how many jobs they're bringing in, what are those average salaries? We're, we're looking for high-paying jobs. I mean, if, if you're just going to do something that's, you're putting up a warehouse and you're only going to have two people in it, we're not most likely going to give any kind of incentive.
So what's the difference between the 381? I'm sorry?
Maybe come back up there so we
So then what is the difference between what you're asking to change from the 381 to the 312 as far as those tax, it's not going to, it's not going to be a rebate anymore? It's going to be a reduction as they pay? Or what is, how does that, what's the describe, what's the difference?
So, it was a much simpler process with the 381, but when this legislature changed the, the way that they look at those rebates, I believe we'll still be able to do a very similar thing, but it's just a different structure we do it under with the 312 than what we did with the 381. I still believe we can structure, and we, we structured the things, but I believe we'll be able to structure it where it will be a reimbursement, if you will, back from the taxes that they pay. I still believe that can be set in place. Where, where they have, it's that increment above what the value was before they ever started, and then whatever the taxes that they pay in, they would get some percentage, in this case, it maybe is 50% for five years, but it's not unlimited and it's not forever. There is a, a set number of years that, that they get that rebate back and then a percentage, and it's all set up in that contract. This is just general guidelines. And they have to be in place for us to be able to even do that. And we've got companies looking right now, you know, and they're interested, and so
So there's nothing changed between the guidelines from 312 and 381 as far as the tax rebate process or the amount maximum or the number of years maximum?
We had guidelines in place a long time ago, but they, they hadn't been updated. They needed to be updated and
What does the update mean? What updates were made that changed those policies from what they were?
Well, it's just passed again. And so this, this right now is what
So it's a reaffirmation?
More or less, with some changes. I mean, it's like, I think the five years, 50%, I don't know that we had anything about, you know, what it might be, what the general guidelines might be. I think it was just a broad, general, you know?
Did we ever exceed 50% or five years in the past?
Have we in the past?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And is there a report that shows that that information can be found for the public?
I don't know that there's a report that just prints it out, but every year, that would be one of the things that the EDC would have come back, and, and every year they do a update on whether the companies that we did similar to this, we did tax abatements with, and they give us all those numbers, and then they say what the, the abatement back would be, and so that's, that's where it would be. I don't know that we've got a
Those, that report that you're saying from the EDC does not apparently include all the tax abatement offers and contracts, right? It just, it's a select few? So how do they select what is allowed for the public to see for abatement contracts?
So they, it didn't, the EDCs did not include the 381s because those were a much simpler process and we, we did not, we didn't have to have the EDC involved in a 381.
But we didn't generate a report for those either?
Well, I mean, I know that the Auditor's Office keeps up with those. I don't know that she's got a, a printout with it, but she could probably generate it and
I'm just curious for transparency sake.
Let Katie come up and speak on it.
I'm just curious for transparency sake.
Sure, let, let Katie.
So I did, I did a report to Commissioners Court a couple months ago.
Right.
So that's a, it's available.
Yep.
I'm assuming with the agenda, if you go back onto the agenda, it's in the Agenda software, which is available on Brazos County. Did you hear me, Kathy?
No.
That's what I'm afraid of. I did a report on the, there's only two current 381s, potential for four, but only two currently active 381s that are not being monitored by the EDC. And I did a report on those couple, probably a month ago, maybe two months ago.
Yeah, it was, it was after
It's the one you were absent for.
After we had the presentation from the EDC on
Yes.
Compliance with the ones where they are.
Yes.
I asked that we have an update on the ones that are not in the, that are not under the purveyance of
I think it was the next week.
Yeah, there's an atom. Yeah, it was, because I took it as a challenge.
Right, yeah, there's a, one of them, one of them is an extension of University Drive.
Mm-hmm.
And what was the other one?
OCG.
Okay.
Academy, the pre, building, the area where the academy used to be.
Right.
Academy sport, sporting goods. And then the rest of them are monitored by the EDC. There is also, we report 381s to the comptroller, and it's on the comptroller's website, and it can be downloaded, last time I checked, as a spreadsheet even, and it has all of them listed. And then also, the EDC report that's given to Commissioners Court should be available on the Agenda software also. Okay?
And Katie, I would add that you're welcome, you welcome the public to contact your office if they have questions specific to any of those things.
Yes, we might have to make an appointment just so that I can make sure I have time and have everything up, you know, here we go.
What, walk-ins not accepted?
Only for you, Commissioner.
Thank you. No, it, it, just to kind of I did look at the, the state site yesterday, and I don't remember which one, but it said that it ended in 2075 or something, which is not correct, because I went back and looked and I thought, there is no way we signed on to anything for
We'll check for that.
So it needs to be corrected. It's not correct.
Probably 2025. That might have been a typo that we typed in. And since I'm up here, I did want to ask if we could consider changing on one of the whereses. Let's see, one, two, three, four, five. On the sixth one
On the resolution.
It says, three quarters vote of the Commissioners Court?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's barbary.
That's what?
That's barbary. You'd be cutting people in half.
So I think the reason that three quarters, he said barbary, that, I mean, I guess we've got to chop somebody in
Yes, I was going, can we, you know, kind of look
Who gets half a vote?
Considered that there's five of y'all? I mean, majority present, you know?
So here I think is the logic behind three quarters when there's five of us on the court. If there's one absent, then it would take three votes to pass it and one could vote the other way. But if you've got five on there, it's going to take four.
What if there's only three here?
Well, you can't, you won't be able to do it. It won't, it won't
Isn't three a quorum?
Three constitutes a quorum.
Three is a quorum, but you couldn't
None of that's in there. Can you put that in there?
Undo this, you could not do it.
Can we, and that's all I'm asking.
You can't get three quarters by dividing three by three. That's not three quarters.
The statute says three quarters?
Bruce is saying that the statute.
It may.
Yeah, because I'm like, three quarters of what?
Yeah.
But just kidding.
It's a, it's a higher level to have to reach to undo.
Maybe, and if the statute says that, that's all we can do, maybe majority present would be, I don't want to get into a problem later. You know, we have, so, that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, but if all five of us are here and three of us vote, it's only 66% or 60%.
Yeah, it's a super majority rule.
Yeah, it says three quarters, but it doesn't say of what. You know, there's no, it's algebra with both X and Y missing.
Katie's saving lives. Come on up, yeah, come on up.
I didn't get it.
I thought came about this when you were talking, in the conversation here. How is the progress of meeting the requirements for these candidates that are granted abatements? How is the requirements they're supposed to meet, how is that reported? How is that kept up with? If someone, some organization is not meeting their requirements, when does the abatement that you're giving, that you've explained goes back to them? When is that removed? How does that work? In other words, how is the monitoring for the requirements of the abatement, how does that work, and how is it reported? And have you ever had to dissolve an agreement? I think you may have had to, I don't know which ones, but a history on that and understanding how the reporting goes and how that can be transparent would make me a bit more comfortable with this.
Okay, so that's, that's what the EDC does when they come in annually and they report to us whether these companies that they've been involved in, they've met their goals.
Okay.
And that, at that point, then, it's in, it's in a public meeting, you know, it's one of the meetings we have, and they'll tell us, okay, well, these companies all met or they didn't meet. And we've had some that didn't meet, but they paid their taxes and they didn't get anything rebated if they didn't meet those, those goals.
So is it a, is it a pass fail or is it incremental thing?
Well, I mean, we can take a look, we don't have to necessarily say, okay, well, if you hadn't, if you're a penny short here, zero. We don't have to do that.
Right.
We, we've got, the court has
You have the leeway to make judgment calls.
Yeah, there's limited discretion.
Yeah, and I, we have, we've actually looked at companies that maybe they were way over in, let's say, jobs and, and, and the, the salaries and all that, and they might have been a little under over here. Well, that's the kind of thing we've looked at and said, okay, well, you know, you met the, the, the whole idea of economic development, and so we've allowed that to go. The one I can think of that, that we've actually ended was, I believe it was VISA, and it was a, I believe they were a telephone, I don't really know
Internet.
Internet, something.
Technology.
It's satellite, it's satellite internet.
But they had all these goals they had to do, and they had to have jobs, and they had to have, you know, salaries and all that. And when COVID hit, everybody found out they didn't need a company to sit there and do all that. They could do it from home. So they didn't do it, they still paid their taxes, we did not rebate anything, and of course they ought to be, or they, they're not here anymore, you know, they're gone. But, but we didn't pay them anything, and then we lost our money. So there's nothing to, to clawback. And if they, if, if this particular year, they met and we gave them back, then we wouldn't claw it back to them. If they didn't meet it the next year, they just wouldn't get a rebate on that year's tax.
Yeah, that's reasonable. Okay, thank you.
But kind of, and, and one thing to think about too, as far as economic development, it's the increment in increase. So if, if somebody's coming in here, let's just use the base level of $10 million, and they want to make a $10 million improvement in a capital investment in a part of our community. As, you know, the $5 million, if, let's say we were to say, okay, we'll do five, 50% for five years, if that was the agreement, what would happen is, is that $5 million of the $10 million that would, that was their investment, that would be fully accessible and taxable, and that revenue would accrue every year to Brazos County. The $5 million above the other 50%, that's the only part. So The $5 million above the other 50%, that's the only part, so, it's not like we're paying out to get something to happen or to occur here, we are not fully realizing the revenue, but we're realizing a part of the revenue in the way that we would agree upon this. So, the net impact on any type of 312 or 381 agreement, for that matter, is, is the amount of revenue from that entity doing what they're doing in our community, the amount of revenue, because they're increasing the value, is going to increase, but it's not going to increase all the way until the period of time of the abatement runs out. So, like I said, the example, somebody puts in $10 million, makes a $10 million investment, we have a 50% agreement, the $5 million is fully taxable every year, and they will pay that regardless. The other half of it, the other $5 million, is conditioned upon them meeting the requirements in the agreement, based on investment, based on payroll, based on whatever else, number of employees and those types of things. And, and if you look at it in economic development terms, incentives that are used like this, they're, they're, they are not the top emphasis or the top thing for people who want to look here and develop here or expand here, they're looking for, like Mr. Quimby said, they're looking for quality workforce, quality of life, what it's like to get people here, people that live here, they look at schools, they look at public facilities, they look at all of those types of things, and then probably about fourth or fifth down on the list is incentives. So, the only time, what you, what, where you are in the economic development process is, is once you get to this point, where you're talking about a 312 or a 381, you're getting down to saying, hey, we would like to make your investment in our community, make it more attractive for you to make that investment in our community instead of somewhere else, and this is what we're willing to do to help to accommodate that. But we don't back up, we always move forward. If we get the agreement and the development happens, it's going to add increment to the revenue, it's going to add to the revenue. The big difference between 381 and 312, Kathy, I think that you asked, is that the way that the, for a large project, the way that the state of Texas, the formula for establishing what our voter-approved tax rate and what our no-new revenue rate would be, is treated very differently under a 312, so if you have a billion-dollar, $2 billion, $17 billion investment, what you'd like to do is, is not have that whole $17 billion be considered to be revenue that you bring in, only half of that $17 billion is considered to be revenue. If you did that under a 381, the entire $17 billion would be considered as revenue, even though 50% maybe would be rebated. So, it's, it's a, it's a, it's another tool that through legislation we have that we can use, and it's one that is preferential for a larger project. And so, and this is the process of going through what we need to do to comply with being able to do 312 as well as 381 as we've done in the past. Does that make sense?
Nina, did you have something you wanted to?
Yes, sir. And based on, I'm going to talk about the reporting, when these contracts are, are approved through Commissioner's Court on the ones that the county monitors, there are specific guidelines regarding what the company has to submit before we even rebate, reimburse them their funding, and if they don't submit those proper documents by a certain deadline, we don't go chasing for them. They have to send us a letter, they have to send us proof that they pay their taxes, they still have to, you know, provide whatever documentation that is specific to that company, and if they don't for that year, they don't get anything back.
You say you don't monitor all?
We do not monitor the EDC, the EDC is very specific on those companies, they, they, they report to us their findings. The ones that the county monitors, it's, we use the same background, either employment, taxes, do they meet their specific qualifications, and if they don't, they don't get their refund back. So, when they submit their letter, then that's when we start initiating our reporting, but if they don't for that year, it's their, you know, they have to initiate it first, we don't initiate them, you know, getting their money back. Does that help? Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Come on up. Name and-
Cynthia Wiley. I'm just curious, have you guys had conversations with businesses that wanted to move here, and then because they couldn't meet the incentives, they decided not to? As, is, do you know of companies?
Yes. Or, is, was the question, have we had conversations with businesses who were interested in coming, and ultimately, they decided to go somewhere else? Is that-
Because the incentives were something they couldn't meet, or you guys weren't willing to invest in them for whatever reason? I'm just curious.
I couldn't tell you what the reasons were, but I can tell you, we've had companies that's taken a look at our area, and it looked like they were very interested, and ultimately, they made a decision to go somewhere else. I don't know whether it was incentives, I don't know whether, I don't know what, or whether somewhere else they offered a lot more, I don't have any idea. I mean, we, we do what we think is the best for, for the county, and what's best for us looking forward, and, you know, that's really where we set the, the line, but there's a lot of factors, it's, it's like has been said, they're looking at a lot of things other than just incentives. Incentives is just one piece, but, you know, they may have decided not to come because they didn't think the workforce was here, you know, I, I don't know, you know, but we have had companies that have looked and decided to go somewhere else.
And I assume the EDC is like actively marketing?
Yes.
Okay, and do we know how they do that, and what their budget is to do that?
Yes.
We do?
That's all disclosed, the EDC's, just basically, is, there are four components to the EDC, each one of which pays an annual $350,000 into the operation of the EDC, that's Brazos County, City of Bryan, City College Station, and Texas A&amp;M University, and there's also a fifth entity that is called Invest Brazos Valley, and Invest Brazos Valley is private businesses who want to have membership in the EDC, and they fund also kind of like an equivalent amount.
And that's private, we, that's undisclosed who those persons are? Do we know who they are?
No, it's, it's, it's-
It's all public?
You can get all that information from the EDC.
Okay.
And it's, it's all public record.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Sure, come on up, Judge.
The more we talk, the more I'm interested, okay?
Good, that, that's what public hearings are for, so great.
Just the, the conversation that we just had there, so, I didn't think of funding the EEC, but you mentioned that Brazos County, City of Bryan, City of College Station, each pay to bankroll the EEC to the tune of $350,000 a year, is that right?
That's correct.
What do they do with that? How many people do they have employed? They got to be doing something that's way beyond what I-
That's probably off of this topic, that's probably was not, I see our attorney standing up, because this is off-topic and we could get into Trump, sure.
Like we said, that's, we can get you on it. The EDC has all this, all this stuff, we know who, where it goes, okay, I can talk to you.
Sorry for digging too deep.
Anybody else? Okay, well, we will adjourn this public hearing, and in 15 minutes or so, we'll start the Commissioner's Court.
Thank y'all for coming.